With approval of two minutes from the last meeting, work study and...
I'll make a motion that we approve the work study minutes from the last meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. The minutes have been passed, four to zero. Thank you very much. Now we have the minutes for the main meeting. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 16th meeting.
Second it.
Call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Minutes have been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Public comment. Anything, Mark?
I've received no requests for anyone to speak tonight.
Okay, public meeting. A proclamation to Danville Girls Softball Team by Gerald. He has his daughter in there somewhere. Raise your hand.
She's back there in the back row. She doesn't want to be seen. I have a proclamation here by the Danville Town Council to recognize the Danville Community High School Girls Softball Team. Whereas today, we recognize the Danville Community High School Girls Softball Team for the remarkable 2021 season and commend the coaching staff and players on their notable accomplishments. Whereas the Warriors had a breakthrough 2021 season, going 28-2, had the most wins in school history, the best single-season batting average, and most runs scored. Whereas the team was not only impressive on the field, but in their academics as well, leading them to the Sagamore Conference Champions, Hendricks County Champions, Class III A-Sectional Champions, Regional Champions, and participated in the semi-state championship. The town of Danville does desire to give the Danville Warriors High School Girls Softball Team special recognition and honor. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that in virtue of the authority vested in the Town Council of the Town of Danville in the state of Indiana, we do hereby proclaim thanks and recognition to the Danville Community High School Girls Softball Team for their years of practice and talent and to be awarded such a high honor. And we urge all citizens to make an impact on their community like these young women have done and continue to do so for the town of Danville. In witness verve, we have herein to set our hand and cause the seal of the Town of Danville, Indiana, to be affixed this 7th day of July, the year 2021.
Bob?
It says...
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Yes, yes, yes. I think we should, we'll all stand up behind him once he gets signed. Thanks. I'm gonna stand by the chair. Unless you want to stay, you're free to go. Thanks for the season. I personally, obviously, have a vested interest in the softball team. I went to every game but two, saw an amazing, amazing, amazing group of girls play this year. So seniors, I wish you nothing but the best. Couldn't have done it without you, so good work.
Yeah, we have to hear about his daughter every time we come up.
It was the team.
Nice to see the team as well.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yeah. They might want to run someday.
Can't get extra credit bonus, you know, with school not being in.
Okay, next on the agenda is Resolution 12, 2021, no value or use. What's happening? Okay. Sorry, I didn't realize. All right. For use of police K-9.
Mr. President, council members, before you tonight, I have a resolution to retire our K-9 Zeke. If you would, give me just a second. I'm gonna read a little something. I'm gonna ask Sergeant Slayback if he will come up here now with Zeke.
Does he have a 401K?
I wish.
Every day.
He gets pensioned.
Doggone's forever. So just real quick, K-9 Zeke has been a tremendous asset to our agency since he started in April 2014. Over the course of Zeke's outstanding eight-year career, he was deployed a total of 427 times, including 104 patrol deployments, which includes warrant services, area searches, building searches, tracking for suspects and apprehensions. Zeke was also used for 323 narcotic deployments, resulting in the seizure of 15.42 pounds of heroin, 10.21 pounds of methamphetamine, 2.4 pounds of marijuana, and 10.8 grams of cocaine from the streets of Danville. Despite all his hard work, Zeke never asked for anything more than to throw his tennis ball and maybe a pat on the head by his handler and fellow officers. K-9 Zeke will now enjoy retirement at home with his K-9 handler, Sergeant Jeff Slayback, where he will then transition into his new full-time role as a family pet. We are grateful for the hard work that K-9 Zeke has given to the citizens of Danville over the past eight years and wish him well in his well-deserved retirement. K-9 Zeke is now 1042, which is off duty for the final time. Take any questions you might have or you might have for Sergeant Slayback and his role with Zeke.
Well, he's a beautiful dog and he's really alert. He's checking all of us out. Checking Mark out the most, though.
How old is Zeke?
He'll be 10 in August.
Well, he deserves to retire.
Yes.
How long do you think it'll take to, I'll say, decommission him and get him to pet-friendly?
Don't think he'll ever be completely... It's gonna take some time, we'll put it that way. The problem is, he stays in a kittle in my garage. He comes to talk with me in the evenings. Here's the truck unlocked.
Sure. Well, he deserves it.
Take him to the prison and let him go smell all his little friends.
Mr. President, obviously, this is a resolution that will require a vote. And then, once the vote, if it's favorable, we have a K-9 transfer agreement that will need to be signed by you, and then we'll also have Sergeant Slayback sign it. He's agreed to sign it, that he will take full custody, care, and control of the animal.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 21-2021.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. You can take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Enjoy your dog.
Thank you very much. Jeff, thank you, and thank Zeke.
Bye, puppy. Sounds like he's ready to go. Go after somebody. Oh, yeah, true. He's got a thick coat. Oh, I'd love it. Want to saw it one time, or?
Couldn't know what to do. Can he breathe with that mask on?
Like to come up and have their picture taken and be a great moment for it if you'd like to.
They're still moving.
I'm waiting for them to move over. Give me the picture.
Hey, guys. In his own, babe. This is you.
No, but... You want to get a picture of him?
Oh, it's fine. I live with him. All are gonna have to, like, get way closer than that.
You guys are just like real police.
Do we need to sign? Okay.
Ordinance 10, 2021, Water Works Bond, Taffslaw. Taffslaw, there's another Taffslaw person. We have many of you. He doesn't wear a skirt, though.
What I thought when I saw the agenda, and I was after a championship softball team and a K-9 retiring, and I'm coming with you with a water ban ordinance.
You don't want to come after children or animals.
Right. So, this is the ordinance that was originally introduced at the last meeting with respect to the water ban. Nothing has changed since it was introduced, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. If it does have a due pass, we are scheduled to close on Friday and fund. And so I would be needing some signatures of the Town Council President if this does pass. But I can reiterate what I said at the last meeting, or I can answer any questions that you guys may have.
It's exactly what we've advertised. It's what we need. I will tell you, when I give you the ordinance tonight for signature, there is a page back here that I'm just including for documentation, but Zach will have actual for the signature because he's got to notarize it.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Refresh memories. This is a ban that will provide some preliminary funds for preliminary engineering and design work, about $1.8 million. That will allow the project to commence from a design perspective. The purchaser of the ban will be North Salem State Bank with an interest rate of 1.44%. We anticipate the bond to be outstanding for about a year and a half before it's taken out. Then there will be a bond taken out to pay for the entire project, which will not be an amount not to exceed 18 million sometime next year.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we pass Ordinance 10-2021, Water Works Ban.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. The motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Oh, just a few. No worries. Take your time. Will they take my house away if we don't? Oh, I could just kept going through that.
And if you have one, yes.
We'll go next one. Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, no problem. This looks very official.
I'd like to point out, you doing it, it's very official. When I take it to its house, I'm being a pain.
Okay, thanks, mate. Okay, we ready for Ordinance B? Ordinance 18, 2021, request for rezoning of 408 South Cross Street. Town Planner, please.
Good evening. This is a request for rezone at 408 South Cross Street. Was heard by the Plan Commission on June 14th and did receive a favorable recommendation. It is up for adoption.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 18-2021, request to rezone 408 South Cross Street.
Second.
The motion is second. Please call the vote.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Resolution 20, 21... Resolution 20, 2021, fiscal plan for annexation. Town Planner.
Yes, this was introduced on, I think I have a date here somewhere, last couple of weeks, I think. It is at 306 Lawton Avenue. It's adjacent to a piece of property that is in the town of Danville, but under the same ownership. This resolution has provided no incremental operating cost to provide comparable service as being served in the county, no adverse impact on other overlapping taxing units, and it is going to decrease the town's tax rate based on what the fiscal plan calls for. And this is a public hearing.
Any comments?
Just a couple of things. Again, I'm certainly not trying to correct Lisa. This has not been introduced before. Because this is a resolution, it doesn't require a previous introduction. It is up for public hearing tonight, which will require us to gavel the meeting open for public comment and then gavel it closed if no comments are made.
Thank you, Mark.
The other thing, I'd like to comment on that before you take action on it, is we had a typographical error on Exhibit A, and the original document that was presented to the council, right there, we'll back up just a little bit, shows Lennar Homes of Indiana, and the document that I'll be presenting to you tonight has the actual names of Zachariah and Stephanie. And I'm not even gonna try and butcher their last name.
Piper.
I will gavel the meeting closed.
Open.
Open? I will gavel the meeting open. Any comments? Discussions? Thank you. I will gavel the meeting closed. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 20, 2021.
Second it.
The motion is second. Take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Ordinance 19, 2021, request for annexation of 306 Lawton Avenue.
This is ordinance, like you said, 19, and this was introduced on June 16th, and it is up for adoption tonight.
Do I have any conversation on this? Comments? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 19-2021, super voluntary annexation.
Motion is second. Please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 20, 20... Ordinance 21, 2021, Amendment to Salary Ordinance. Clerk Treasurer, in light of the Clerk Treasurer, the Town Manager, say something.
I'll be happy to take this. Ordinance 2021, 2021, it's a mouthful, is an amendment to the salary ordinance. What occurred? The fire chief approached about vacating two captains' positions and making them lieutenant's positions. So it's actually gonna be a reduction in cost. It's gonna help him more efficiently promote from within and administer his department. And then the Clerk Treasurer moved one of her part-time employees to a department facility aide. Person will be a float person that will assist departments when other, whether office managers are on vacation or helping the Parks Department in some facilities management and cleaning, things like that, so...
Okay, thank you. Any comments?
This comes for just first introduction only tonight.
No comments? Thank you. That was up for, no further action on this one today.
That's correct, sir.
Ordinance 22, 2021, request for annexation of 567 North CR 300 East. Town Planner.
Good evening. This is an ordinance for annexation. This is for introduction only. It is, if anyone is familiar or remembers the last meeting we had last month, there was an introduction of property around 150, 60 acres that Lennar is under contract with Lennar. And this is just another small piece that will connect all of that. So again, it's just for introduction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? That has been introduced. Aye. Event permit process. Town Manager.
Get addressed from here. Would you like me to go up to the podium? It's up to you guys. Okay. We've been working with the Danville Downtown Partnership Executive Director in creating this event application. The benefit of the application is having one clearinghouse, basically, that will... She'll keep a master calendar of all the events. Therefore, if someone comes to us and says, "I want to close the square on such and such a date," she will know if there's Farmer's Market, if there's a concert that night, whatever the case may be. So initially, what we're going to do is actually have this event come through her first so that she can check calendars, dates, and everything, and then they will come to the council like normal because we do have an ordinance that requires your approval for street closures. Again, the only thing that she had in the initial, that when we submitted, was that there was a damage deposit of $250. We asked her to go ahead and remove that. That's a nightmare for the Clerk Treasurer's office to take that money in and then turn around and put it back out. And quite honestly, I don't know what the damage is gonna be to our streets. So we'll deal with that if we have to, obviously. But we just felt that was an unnecessary thing. But what we're looking for is consensus tonight. If this is an okay form for you guys, that we will start utilizing and a process that we'll start utilizing through the partnership. She even has a checks and balance system so that the organizers will have to check with fire, police, public works. So again, anything that, hopefully, things that have been forgotten in years past, everything will be covered this time.
Okay. Any comments?
I'm good with it.
We have a general consensus?
Thank you very much.
Jay, capital expenditure, workers' comp insurance renewal.
There's so much money on the line here. I'll come up and talk to you from here. Yes, sir.
Many hats you have.
Yes, sir. This is just an annual renewal.
We don't pay you enough.
I concur fully. Yes. This is our annual expenditure for our workers' compensation insurance. As you can see, it's split between our CCD fund, the wastewater and the water departments. Again, there's really not much to it. You've got everything in your packet on what's involved with it. It's a necessary evil. We have to have it. It's $84,726 for our renewal. It will be good until July of next year.
Any comments? I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the capital expenditure for the workers' comp insurance renewal.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt. Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Capital expenditure, pipe. Stormwater Superintendent. It's quite a big name. Do you have a group now behind you?
I do, of one.
That's amazing.
But I'll take what I can get because we need all the help we can get. This is just a typical purchase that we make throughout the years. But we wanted to bring it to you because it is a little, you know, it's under the 10,000. We want to make you aware of it. And there's a couple of the things that I wanted to bring up concerning pipe and some of the work going on. The pipe's getting harder to get, more expensive to get. So these are some of the purchases that I would do as they come, but I wanted to buy them now for future projects because prices are increasing. So you'll see me up here a couple more times at least before the year's over with some more purchases of pipe structures. Who knows what else? That's it.
Any comments?
Yeah. So where do you keep this pipe if you're not using it?
We, the wastewater department and I share a lot. We put all of our pipe in the same place. It's relatively, the, the style is similar, so we keep it at wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. All right. Just curious.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the capital expenditure for pipe.
Second it.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been passed five to zero. Thank you. L, any signing? No. Capital expenditure, gun locks.
Mr. President, council members, come before you tonight with a capital expenditure request for gun locks. I'll just explain a little bit about the program. So the federal government gives us rifles that we can have for free, and we have several of them. We do an agreement with the federal government every year. Part of the agreement has changed last year. They're requiring a gun lock. So we actually had to have two separate locks. So if somebody was to break into our car, that's the first barrier. The door is being locked from the car. They want a secondary lock that would lock the rifle inside the vehicle. So if somebody would break into the car, we'd have to go into another locking system to be able to get the rifle. So this is a new requirement, part of this agreement we've had for years. I just need to stay up to date with the requirement from the federal government so we can get these rifles and keep them. So this gun lock purchase is basically just to keep up with what our agreement says that we're supposed to be doing. So come before you tonight with that. I'll take any questions you have about the rifles and the gun locks.
So the government gives us the rifle.
Yes.
And then they are asking us to pay $800 for a lock?
Right. It's a, it's a free rifle program. We've, we've used it for years. They give us rifles and we can get handguns and other things. It's not real good for the handguns. They're 45 caliber, hard to find the ammo, very expensive to shoot. But the rifles, we do need. It does save the town thousands of dollars to have the free rifles. Some of the departments all over the country has had this issue where their cars being broken into even at their house. And if the rifle's in there and it's not secured with a secondary lock, it's just making it easier for the bad guy to take the rifle from the vehicle.
So what, where does the rifle?
Uh, most of us have AR-15 or M16s.
What's the value of one of those?
Uh, he's a gun guy. What about 800 now? Thousand?
Thousand?
Thousand with all the gun market, the, the craze that they had over the guns. So several thousand dollars worth of free guns, so they need us to put a couple gun locks on them.
And, and I, we're not obviously protecting the value or protecting this from getting into the wrong hands.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Make a motion to pass capital expenditure for the gun locks.
Second.
Can you, motion in a second? Take the vote?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief.
Approved. Thank you. Next one is capital expenditure, test well. Water Superintendent. Wow.
I know you all is probably getting tired of the capital expenditure request on the test wells. It seems like that's the only thing I come over to talk about. To be honest with you, this well's already been drilled. We were drilling south of CVS back in June. It didn't pinch out at all. We were able to shoehorn it in right behind the liquor store. Got it all done without him to move the well rig and everything back to Frankfurt or Franklin, Indiana. We got back there, we started drilling. Brad, the liquor store was convenient, you know, let us drill there and the homeowner that lives south of there. We were about 470 feet from well number one that we currently use, and it followed a formation all the way down to about 137 feet. We were really excited. We thought we had another well. Well, it didn't work out. Did not enough formation to yield the kind of water we're looking for. So that's what the capital expenditure request for $15,789 is for. I'd like to add that after talking with Kent, he's on vacation this week, but next week we plan on meeting with possibly Joe with the well drilling company and Kent to discuss the well field and what we've done so far. Hoping, like I say, next week. Currently, we, we drilled two test wells. We drilled one in 2019 in Blanton Woods. It's a good, good spot for production well. And the one we drilled in Blanton Woods last spring is a good one. And then the addition to well five, which is by the swinging bridge, obviously is ready to go also. With that said, we, we believe we've met the demand for the new facility with these wells. So we'll have to drill two large wells where those two test wells are and then finish out well five. So we, we do believe we've met the demand for the new facility. And we've also, in the same process, found the limitations of our aquifer as of today. That may change, but after some discussions, maybe next week, we'll see what they want to do, if they have any ideas. So that's what this expenditure request was for. Have any questions?
Any comments? Are you bringing the boys up from Texas or Louisiana to do that?
South.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the department expenditure request for the water department in the amount of $15,789.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you all for what all you've done this evening for the water, was the passing the ban and all that. Really excited about what, what we're going to be doing, so.
Oh, I am too. Super excited.
Yeah.
I hope we get water, unless we have so many holes around Danville that.
They filled them in, but yeah, it was a, it was a real bummer because I.
Somebody falls on the ground, all the water will come up through the holes.
Yeah, those aren't fun to drill when they, when they hit water when they're still trying to drill a hole in the ground, so.
There you go.
Thank you all.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claim dockets? I have a motion to approve.
I've got, I've got a few comments, Mr. President. I'm very sorry.
No claim dockets?
I said I have a few comments to make if you'd like to hear them.
Oh, for sure.
It's up to you.
That sounds interesting.
Okay.
I'm very, very happy you'd like to do that.
First thing I'd like to seek is consensus to do a traffic study. Obviously, you've all been involved in an email chain about the speed zone on Meadowwood Drive. It's a dead end street that runs just south of US 36 on, off of Mackey Road. It's currently a 30 mile an hour speed limit. There, three of the residents have contacted us requesting a change to 20. Checked with Traffic Engineering, who we've used before. They'll do the study for $1,200. So I'm seeking consensus to move forward with, with doing a traffic study.
Is this something we should do? Is this your recommendation?
It is. I, I, I have no problem having the speed reduced to 20. I think if, it's a good faith effort on the town's part to try and help whatever fears that that neighborhood has.
So Mark, I know you had said in the email string that we would ultimately do what the traffic study suggested. If it doesn't come back suggesting to lower that speed, can we, can we still act to lower that speed? That's what I thought.
We can, we can go to 25 would be the lowest we can do. I, I think that, that the Traffic Engineering firm, when we tell them what we're looking for, will take that into consideration, that we are wanting it reduced to a 20, and they'll look at that with a favorable recommendation. Caitlin may have something to add to that.
Ding.
Yep.
Okay. So that was pretty much it, what Mark said. You can change it down to 25 there in an urban district without doing the speed study. But from the emails, it seems like that wasn't what was being requested, and so just to comply with the law. And then it's Mark's recommendation that you go ahead and get the, the traffic study for anything under 25.
Okay.
I drove down that today. I said I drove down Meadowwood today. There is a speed limit sign that says 30 mile an hour. I was more concerned about making sure that I could get down that road in between the cars because there was a lot of cars parked on the side of the street. I, I don't even know how somebody could even get up to 30 down that road.
I, I also went down that road and I find it is hard to get up because there's a lot of parks, parking spaces on either side. What I find interesting is that they want, somebody has requested also to move all the parking to one side of the road, which would cause the road to be able to go faster. Greg has made a comment. It's almost self-governing for the speed with having all the cars there. I'm not saying not to do this. I, I have no problem with lowering the speed if it's, if we can do it.
I don't have any problem, you know, offering a consensus to, to do it. I'm just making an observation of what, you know.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest to let them all park on one side because that would definitely let them speed up.
In conversations we've had with Chet, I think he sees bigger pictures like that and realizes that those are natural traffic deterrents when there's, when you have that congestion on there, it's helping to reduce. We had the same discussion about here on like North Tennessee or where, you know, it kind of jogs like that. We have so many complaints about that, but as Chet pointed out, that's a natural speed reducer because people have to kind of slow down to get through it. So I, I think he'd look at this as the same way, don't you? Yeah. Yeah.
Are there side, in that email, a lady talked about kids that had to walk to like the high school. I'm not even, there are sidewalks down that road, but how did?
There are sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Is there a sidewalk that, as you come out of Meadow, down Mackey to like Westview? I mean.
There's a gap right here. Right there's a small gap.
Okay, because right there's the sidewalk. Okay.
And I believe there's, is that a safe crosswalk right there?
It looks like it. How did you say that?
Rob, is that one we put in? Okay. So, you know, I'm sure we could work with the property owner there on the corner and fix that sidewalk to go around to that. I'd have no problem with that.
All right. Anything else? Mark, you have some more talking?
All right. Oh, yes. I have a ton, sir. So we had department head meeting yesterday because Monday was a holiday. Department of Public Works did clean up from Chamber fireworks. They're continuing some spray patching. They're trying the new, new product this week that they're hoping will alleviate some of the bleed through. They're going to begin a concrete replacement on an alley south of Marion between Jefferson and Washington. They're preparing work for a sidewalk install on Lincoln Street at the cemetery. They're working with our code compliance officers to clean up 1033 West Lincoln Street. And this weekend, they'll have Farmer's Market and a block party on North Washington Street. Is that everything, Andy? Parks Department is working on the awning for the building. He's got football meeting. They're getting ready to establish some fundraising for the football field. He's scheduled the second interviews for the community engagement officer. He's going to be getting out a second meeting notice for the traffic committee. He still has high hopes that he can fix the fountain on the square. I did.
The waning, is that waning?
Yes. The, he's moving forward with our first sidewalk project, which is at Sycamore and Money. Is that correct? Yeah. Sycamore and Money, and it'll go all the way around to the new subdivisions on 10th Street. Just an interesting story. This would have been probably the first, I guess, complaint request or whatever that we took as the Three Amigos with Barry, Will and I when we were a couple of years ago. So a little nostalgia for you there, but we're finally getting, we finally have the money to do it with the food and beverage, so.
Was that complaint from me?
I can say it was if you'd like. And then Parks Department's had some problems with vandalism. It's a little higher this year. Not sure why, but it has been. Water Department has been working with Camden Creek, getting their new water lines in, putting installing meters at Kensington. He's been meeting with developers to, for a water main on 10th Street to finish out to 200 and then going ahead and 200 out to 300. He's also been working on some landscaping, on some projects they've had, obviously the well drilling, and he's meeting with engineers, as he told you, next week. Wastewater, the test results back on their, which study was it, Tony? The wet test, thank you. I don't know why I can't remember that. They're getting ready to submit those to IDIM. They're getting ready to do a study to show that their lab is capable of testing. They'll be doing left lift station checks. They're expecting a chemical delivery. He and Barry are working on a project at Meadow Drive in Maine where it's a sinkhole, and they'll be doing some work on the belt press. Fire Department has been dealing with a complaint on Broadway that dealt with dog feces, that someone decided the best way to get rid of it was to burn it. They've had 1,008 runs for the year. They're up 200. They had 51 runs last week with 184 in June, which was probably one of the busiest months that I can think of. We had one over 200 way back when, but I think there was a drought or something, so. Police Department, they received about $1,800 in seizure money. They're looking for an additional 1,000. If they can make another seizure, they, they've got a lead on it. The reserves have been in training and they had 11 charges over the weekend. I'm sure you saw Officer Lean's email. Planning Department is working to get the planned commission agenda out. I don't believe we're going to have an RDC meeting this month. I think the consensus has been that to move along. She's been working with ad dressing, working on the new large scanner that we'd received and working with Arbor Homes. Stormwater, there are sinkholes everywhere. They, unfortunately, with the rain that we've had, Barry's been chasing sinkholes all over town. So if you get complaints on them, please let Barry know where it is and know that he is working very diligently. He is out in the field consistently, working on those things. He's also been working with Goodwill on their sidewalk and a retaining wall. And you'll be happy to know, after two years of approval, he's finally hired someone and they will start in two weeks.
And now one of our largest departments.
Yes.
In wastewater.
And the last thing I have, and I don't think Will knew I was going to do this, but this month is National Parks and Recreation Month. So congratulations to them. Please go out and visit your park. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Staff and council comments.
So first, just a comment that, sorry to hear that Danville lost a former police officer on the Fourth of July. Saw that email and, and thanked him, thankful for his service and, and may he rest in peace. I did have just a quick question, maybe from Mark. I was just curious, several years ago, we had done work on.
I was just curious, several years ago, we had done work on Stratford Ridge, Stratford Hill. Do you recall what the total cost on that project was? I'm just, just out of curiosity.
Go back and look, but it was close to $450,000.
Okay. Just curious. Okay. I have nothing further. Thank you. I have nothing.
Oh, Nancy. One thing I got to say is I went to the fireworks, and I found it very short and lackluster. I didn't really get a buzz. Sorry. Sitting there waiting for something, and then it went, that was it. So, and then the second it was over, man, you had to get out of, the big deal was driving down the road, tell the police there. So, that's all I got to say. Maybe $10,000 isn't getting as much bang for our money as we would have years ago. $10,000 worth of the stuff you can buy in the, in the stores, and you put that out there, you'd probably have a pretty good set of fireworks, because they were letting off the other fireworks, the private ones, and I thought that was the ones we were getting. Anyway, sorry, that's all I got to say. So, that's about it. Do I have a motion for claim dockets?
Would approve the claim docket.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion's been passed. We need to sign the claim dockets. Just one more comment. We have a fire chief that went and did something above and beyond the call of duty. While he was off duty with his family, he got a call, and it just happened to be, or he heard the call, he just happened to be very close to it, and he ran to that house, and he got in there, and he was kind of understanding, because he knows the territory of who's in there, and gentleman had diabetes. He got the dogs out, two big rottweilers and a cat, left the cat with his wife, and during that, he had called the fire department to get there, but of course, Rob was there way ahead of time, and he didn't find any, anybody there, but when the fire department started to come, the only casualty was his wife, because the cat went nuts when, and she's trying to hold a cat she doesn't know, and the fire, fire trucks are making all the noise, and the cat's going crazy. But I just have to commend him for, as off duty, to get right there and know what to do. People that were speaking to him on the phone could actually hear the fire burning. So, I want to tell you to stop doing that. Get the firemen to do that. You can't do that in t-shirts and flip-flops. We appreciate your, your effort, and thank you for that, Chief.
Can I add to that real quick? When I got the phone call, when Rob called me the other night after that happened, told me the story, everything, I wasn't surprised. That's the kind of man he is. If he sees something that needs done, he's going to do it, so, thanks, Chief. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.